Hey, everybody ready? Good evening, welcome to this concurrent meeting of the School District Administration Unit Number Twelve School Board and the Lunen Derry School District School Board. If you would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Becky, one more time.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Nancy, are you leading off?
Yes.
Are you leading off?
Oh, yeah. I can't. I'm nervous.
We have a few recognitions to start the evening tonight. Nancy Hendricks has the first one.
Good evening. Vicki Stickney came to Matthew Thornton's school from Derry 11 years ago. She quickly became a VIP on the staff. Vicki works daily to provide excellent instruction for our struggling non-special education readers and to motivate all of the students in the school to read through our Books and Beyond program. She was a critical part of implementing our three-tiered instruction model. Annually Vicki gives what she describes as her gift to the school by setting up Celebrity Reader Day. We've had beauty queens, governors' wives, elected officials, radio and TV personnel, sports figures, and parents all come in to read to the children and foster in them a love of reading. Despite her strong instructional abilities Vicki is never content to stop looking for better ways to help our students learn to read. Vicki shares all she learns and helps others to become better teachers through workshops and conducts the staff in the district. Vicki spends her summers offering summer enrichment classes to students using a thematic approach such as teddy bears or Harry Potter to add fun and exciting reading opportunities for students. She has recorded parent information teacher shows that air on our local cable station and in her spare time she has volunteered to serve on school committees such as our PBIS Universal Team and our School Wellness Committee. The best way to describe Vicki's work is to say that she always gives at least 200% in everything that she does and most importantly she makes learning to read fun. We are thrilled to know that the Granite State Reading Council saw fit to name Vicki Stickney Granite State Council International Reading Association 2011 Reading Teacher of the Year Award for her work promoting literacy among children and adults in the state of New Hampshire. Please help me recognize Vicki.
We'd love for her to say a few words, wouldn't we?
Okay. It was a lovely surprise to get this award. I'm very fortunate to do something I genuinely enjoy doing. I love teaching so what could be nicer than to be recognized by your peers for doing something you enjoy. So, thank you very much, I appreciate this. And I hope to see you all Friday for Celebrity Reader.
Every year at this time we have the bittersweet privilege of welcoming a new school board representative from the student council and saying goodbye to the prior one. Rebecca's been here for a year. You're graduating in a couple of weeks, so you're pretty much checked out of the whole school thing already. Yeah, it happens that way. Where are you going next to her?
UConn.
Really? Cool. Come over here for a second and I'm gonna put you on the spot and say, tell us what it's been like from your perspective being a board representative.
Well...
Microphone's here.
It's definitely been a learning experience. I didn't know a whole lot about the position when I started doing it and I didn't know a lot of what to expect, so it's been a lot of getting used to public speaking and working with adults which I didn't do a lot of on a regular basis in school. So, those kinds of things were new to me, but it's been an awesome learning experience just getting to see what really happens to run the school.
Well, thank you very much for your dedication and your service and all the contributions you've made over the course of the year. Good luck, go Huskies!
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Becky, UConn has got without a doubt the best ice cream you are ever encountered. It's true. It originally was a land grant college and they still have a dairy farm and they make their own ice cream and it's got about 95% fat in it. It's so delicious. You'll enjoy it.
Nate, you wanted to go on to item 3.1.
Uh, no. I'd like to recommend we go to item 3.4.
You want to do the NIASC report first?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jay and team? Yeah, that is what you said and then I got confused thinking that you wanted to get rid of the quick stuff first. Yeah.
Good evening, on behalf of my colleagues Steve Juster, Dr. Kim Linley Soucy, Anthony Carroll-Yellow and I, who represent half of the steering committee who helped lead our school through the NIASC process, we're pleased to be here tonight to discuss the final report and the visiting committee's findings. Before we begin, I want to just talk about NIASC. NIASC stands for New England Association of Schools and Colleges and they have the oldest institute, running institute who accredits schools all over the world. Their accreditation is based upon schools adherence to best practice in education and they send visiting committee members from all over New England to evaluate schools based upon seven standards that govern this institution. They are mission statement and expectations, curriculum, instruction assessment, leadership, school resources for learning, and community resources for learning. Again, we're here this evening to share the results and I want to start by saying that our visit in November was extremely successful. We were recommended by the Commission of NIASC for continued re-accreditation. That is the highest possible distinction a school can receive, so it was a very successful endeavor for us. And again, we're going to be talking about how this all unfolded. We look at NIASC as a continuum and that there's a reason why these visiting committees come every 10 years to evaluate schools. Throughout that 10 years, there's a self-study process, a pre-visit with the preparation and meeting the chair of the committee, the visit and the follow-up. And Steve's gonna talk a little bit about the self-study and how we started this.
Well, probably the first thing to indicate about the self-study is it's overwhelming. You're trying to look at your school and one aspect of it, of course, is you've gotta be reflective. I mean, I look in the mirror and I see, you know, blindingly handsome. I don't know, I don't know what other people see. But, the idea is, of course, that you're trying to be reflective, you're trying to look at it with a certain perspective and they give you guidebooks to go by, but there are hundreds of indicators in those guidebooks that you have to go through and answer each question, gather information. It takes a few years. Some of it involves surveys which take some time to get back and get the results and then try to use those results. And somehow, you know, how do you compile this into one book? And they had told us initially, try to get it under 100 pages and it really took a long time to work on that. And you think, how can you bring all this together into one literate volume that sounds like a journey sort of physically and philosophically through our entire school? And I remember at one time we were sort of in the middle of it, in the middle stages, getting the information together and one of the teachers, Bob Koch, came to me and said, "You know, I'm trying to get this 9A and 9B in my section and I really, can you read it? It reads like this to me. I don't know what they're looking for, what do you think?" And I thought, this is one indicator. We've got a long way to go, like there's a lot of these questions that we had to work out. And we ended up getting down to 133 pages rather than 100 and I really thought when we met with the NIASC people, Janet Allison, who's their head, she would say to us, "No, you've gotta get under, you know, you can't do that." And we sent it off to her after we had put it together, again, you know, literally years of work putting it together, getting everything so it read like one long report. And I really thought she would say something like, "You've gotta get it down." And when she met with us and I said, "You know, it is 133 pages, we're a little longer than you want," and she said, "You know, I looked it over, it's giving the visiting committee everything they need, not one word was wasted." And that was probably the best compliment we could have on the entire self-study process to go from all sorts of indicators all over the place and, you know, every teacher in the school had to help bring it all together. Everyone came with their piece and said, "If we can get all this in, it's gonna be great and it's gonna show who we are." So, when they see it, they see a very accurate picture of who we are and that leads us to the pre-visit.
So, exactly one month prior to the November 14th visit, we met with Dr. Joseph Maruszek. He's the principal of Mansfield High School in Mansfield, Mass. And the purpose of that meeting was to review plans we put in place for the four-day visit and to answer, for them to answer any preliminary questions that we had. Dr. Maruszek's assistant chairs, Assistant Superintendent Chip McGee and Ken Prue were also part of this meeting. We started with a school, a tour of our school, similar to the one that we give to the community at the start of the school year. And I think they were very impressed and it was quite evident to them that we were a mission-driven school right from that first visit. They saw the pillars, they saw the mission statement showcase, the banners, and had a good understanding that we believe in this, in the mission statement and in our expectations for our students. We also showed the workroom that they would be doing a lot of their, having a lot of their meetings and discussions and doing a lot of writing of the report for these 18 members and we had converted the Phase Six faculty room into a workroom space for them. And they were very impressed with just the cleanliness of such a large facility, the buildings and grounds, and how respectful our students were. They were very impressed with just the tour itself. We then sat down in the conference room to review the required documents we had completed, the self-study report as Steve had indicated, a copy of the school's critical strengths and needs, and this binder which essentially had the entire visit planned out. So, each visiting committee member received this binder in the mail and it had a copy of the self-study report, our student handbook, a letter welcoming them, the entire committee with their information, and then essentially the school community profile, our school-wide strengths and weaknesses, a profile of our school, the mission statement and expectations, school-wide rubrics, the visit schedule, a school map, the bell schedule, and a directory for LHS. So, they went through this binder and Dr. Maruszek looked at us and said, "You know, I've chaired 14 visiting teams in my tenure here and I've never seen a school more prepared for this visit. I was going to walk you through what the visit would look like and you already have it done." So, he was very impressed and that's a credit to the steering committee. Anthony's gonna talk about the visit itself, but a lot of legwork went into that initial meeting and we were very prepared. So, each visiting committee team member received that and I think we were pretty much ready to go after that meeting. Over lunch, again, we had talked more about the arrangements for the visit, for the visiting committee members, and then we sent out the information that month.
I'd like to walk you through the visit, the four-day visit of the visiting committee. It's hard for me to impress upon you the amount of detail that went into planning this, so I have for you a copy of the schedule that they adhere to, the 11-page minute-by-minute schedule that these 18 visiting committee members and all the staff and students at Lunen Derry High School had to adhere to. So, I'd like to give you all the copy. Of course, then I'll walk you through each bullet on all 11 pages. So, the visiting committee consisted of 18 members. As Principal Jason Parent said, the chair of the committee was Dr. Joseph Maruszek. He's the principal of Mansfield High School. He chaired at least 14, chaired or co-chaired at least 14 other NIASC visits. Then there were two deputy superintendents and assistant principal and 14 other teachers from New England that were on this committee that came to visit us. So, we knew we were gonna get a very thorough look and we were excited about that and also excited to see what we could do better. We knew we were good, like, we knew we were good. We tried really hard. We have a very good team that tries really hard, but we know we could be better and so we were looking to see the expertise that these other teachers and administrators could bring to our high school. They met at 10 o'clock on Sat, on Sunday morning at the hotel. They had never met each other before except for the chair and the two deputy chairs. The 14 teachers had never met those three leaders. They got to know each other in the morning and decided how they were gonna break up the standards to come to the school. We were there with them at the hotel, getting them settled in, and then met them again at the high school at 3 o'clock where we gave what's called the panel presentation. The panel presentation is the opportunity for the school to tell the visiting committee a little bit about ourselves. What was, a couple of outstanding things about the panel presentation. One is five, well, four teachers, an administrator, and six students giving the panel presentation. More students than faculty, talking to the visiting committee about this great school that we have and this great school district that they grew up in. It was a Sunday afternoon. We could not make the teachers attend on a Sunday afternoon. Jay addressed the faculty, he said, "You know, you put a lot of work into this, we have a really great report here, we have a really great school, it would be really nice if you showed up Sunday afternoon." We got almost every faculty member to show up on a Sunday afternoon. It's crazy. And the visiting committee was overwhelmed. They said, "We've never seen this many people at a Sunday panel presentation before." Almost to the man, every faculty member, every student genuinely interested, genuinely excited, genuine attitude of partnership with the visiting committee about this evaluation. Students at Lunen Derry High School with some faculty mentorship over the previous two years have put together a video, like a five-minute introductory video to show the visiting committee, give them a flavor for Lunen Derry High School. And we've actually brought that video and we'd like to show it to you now. It's 4 minutes 33 seconds, it won't take very long at all. It's very loud otherwise, I already, I already checked it.
I hope you give us a good critique. I mean, it's always important to always look back at yourself and say, "Where can I grow?" Because I don't think there's a perfect school out there, us included, so I would love to see us grow and to be challenged to grow further just as we challenge our students.
Try to see as, as much as you can. It's, it's a wonderful place to be. There are a lot of great things going on around, all over the building. I hope that you see what we see every day.
Variety, good staff. Supportive.
You're somebody open.
High expectations.
Fun.
Family.
Opportunities.
Friendly.
School spirit.
Warm.
Giving back.
Comfortable.
Motivated.
Encouraged.
Nurtured.
Compassionate.
Really personal.
Look carefully because I think you're gonna see a lot of really good things and I think there's certain things that can be improved. Every place has that, but we have strong leadership, we have a strong teaching staff, we have a very great curriculum. But look at the kids. Our kids are what make this building function.
Hi, I'm Katie Sullivan, graduating class of 1990 and currently an assistant principal here at Lunen Derry High School.
And my name's Kayla Green, graduating class of 2009. I'm going to be a sophomore at Stonehill College and I'm currently here at Lunen Derry High School working with Katie over the summer.
What we hope you notice over the next 15 minutes of this video is that Lunen Derry High School is all about student achievement, Lancer Nation, and school pride. Kayla and I, being 19 years apart in graduation years, share a common bond of both winning a state championship. Myself, back in 1990, I won the Class L Girls Basketball Championship which brought me to Keene State to play four years there.
And my senior year, I was fortunate enough to win two state championships, one in field hockey and the other in lacrosse, and that brought me on to playing lacrosse at Stonehill and I'm gonna be there for my second year.
Go Lancers!
Go Lancers! Do you feel that Lancer pride right there? The rest of the video that you will now see gives a brief glimpse of the Lunen Derry community, the history of this facility, and reflections on the three major components of our mission statement.
With the exception of about half a dozen photos, everything you see, the stills and the video clips, and everything you hear, including the soundtrack, are products of the students and staff of LHS. This is especially true of the narrative and the message. Enjoy. Situated in southern New Hampshire and Rockingham County on the edge of the Golden Triangle, the town of Lunen Derry is ideally located to provide her residents with many fabulous opportunities. Within an hour, give or take a few minutes, community members who call Lunen Derry home can commute to Boston, the Seacoast, Lake Wanapusaki, the White Mountains, and the state capital. The state's largest colleges and universities, the University of New Hampshire, Southern New Hampshire University, and Dartmouth College, all are accessible for educational opportunities, cultural, and athletic events. Should one have the urge to get out and about, most everyone can find something to their liking just a hop, skip, and a jump away from the door and front door. It is no wonder that in the past 50 years Lunen Derry has been one of the fastest-growing communities in the state of New Hampshire. Currently having 24,837 residents, Lunen Derry ranks as having the ninth-largest municipal population in the state. Into this setting is intricately woven an educational system that caters to Lunen Derry's children. A vastly growing community, Lunen Derry boasts a student-to-adult ratio that is tops in the state of New Hampshire. One public kindergarten and three elementary schools service our youngest students' needs. When the students are ready to move on to grades 6 through 8, they are promoted to the town's sole middle school. The twilight of their public school years is spent here with us at Lunen Derry High School. The high school building was built in 1972 as a junior high school. As student populations grew, additions were added in 1975 and 1978. The building opened as a junior/senior high school in September of 1978. The current 9 through 12 grade configuration was adopted in 1982. Additions in 1998 and 2003 brought the building to its current capacity of 2,100 students. Since its beginning in 1978, the campus has been and still is the center of community activities. The heart of the community, the facilities not only provide a forum from which to offer formal education to our young adults and preparation so they may contribute to the role at large, it also serves as the physical center for the town. All homedays, parades, recreational activities, all find their home in our facilities. Lunen Derry High School's first principal, Ed Thibodeau, sought to create a school that was of the highest caliber, not only in academics, but also in character, service, and dedication to its youth and the community. To that end, he oversaw the construction of a first-rate facility and gathered a faculty and staff together that he liked to call Eagles. Rare, splendid, very powerful educators who began the journey towards excellence.
I think LHS offers a wide variety of different types of classes, so you can basically get into anything you're interested in.
LHS has one of the best music programs in the area. They have, they have great staff, great resources.
I've been succeeding at school because I've been able to seek extra help.
So, I've been here for nine years and my experience as teachers here are very dedicated to their students.
And I try to share my interests and stories and things with the students in my class and I think when a teacher is excited, the kids pick up on it and they, they get excited about the subject as well.
I like the high expectations for students, for teachers, for everyone. It drives us to be, to be better.
I think in a public school system, a lot of people believe that there's really no challenge in education, that kids aren't really being put to the test. And I think that a lot of kids who leave Lunen Derry and go out and go to college feel like they're incredibly well-prepared for the world.
The teachers are really awesome. You actually, they actually like to teach you new stuff and they enjoy it.
The selection of classes, honors classes.
The environment that, that we have here at the school is great. You know, there's such amazing equipment, facilities, everything's pretty new and...
They keep me on track a lot, like the teachers, and they don't let me slack off at all.
I've been here long enough that Lunen Derry High School feels like my extended family.
Really helping a kid learn who they are. I think that's one of the things we try to do here and I think that's something that certainly we succeeded.
With a lot of the elective courses that I've taken, it really has helped me to figure out what I'm interested in, what I wanna do in college.
I took an internship program for nursing and realized that's not what I wanna do and then I took the future educators program and realized English teaching is what I wanna do.
Diversity in programs like biotechnology.
I've participated in interactive classes with the special education students, so they helped me see I wanted to be an occupational therapist.
It's a great school. I mean, it provides opportunities like MST, I'm, I'm part of the Bridges program where I can take college courses at National Community College and receive college and high school credits, so. I mean, it's amazing programs like opportunities that they allow students to have, so.
Yeah, and LHS helped me become a better citizen through, like, student council and helping out with my community.
LHS likes to encourage, charity fund bases.
An example would be like the canned food drive. They kind of promote us to do that by maybe adding competition within classes or, they're really good at like telling us when we can help out.
It taught me that to be nice to everyone and you don't have to be mean to anyone, to joke around and just to always be outgoing in every situation.
Recycling, we do a lot of recycling here. I say it every day on the morning announcements. Gets annoying a little bit, but it pounds on the point to recycle.
The kind of like respect, like to respect other people and their possessions and stuff like that.
Giving back, like even the smell of things can make the biggest difference.
To be really involved with what's around, like, the community and helping out for good causes and just being a good person all around.
They have taught me that it's very important to be a good citizen 'cause if you can't help, you know, other people, why would somebody wanna help you?
I think it's hard not to be a good citizen if you grow up in a good town. You have programs to do things and help people. If you go to church, you can do stuff there.
All the students here do well and abide by the rules.
We're kind of like a close-knit group.
Our school is really closely bonded together. Generally speaking, kids are really great to each other.
What separates Lunen Derry is a certain sense of community and pride. I think that the kids that are here, for the most part, wanna be here and I think that they have that camaraderie that exists. I think the connections that are there are far different.
To know that if you need something from the LHS community, you're gonna get it from the LHS community.
All the leadership I've learned from student council, I'm usually shy and just follow everyone else, but being, having to be a leader and voicing my opinion.
I know there's a, there's a lot to choose from and attendance is very, very good at a lot of the activities.
Anywhere you go, there's gonna be clicks, so I feel like the overall student body is just very, it's starting to become more open to new things.
Although there's like the clicks and stuff, most people get along well and you just find new friends every day pretty much.
You don't feel like you're just one of like 50 kids, like, you're somebody in that class and you have like teachers that you can go back to every time and still know your name and it's nice.
We hope you enjoyed your introduction to our school community. Please remember, it is just that, only an introduction. As we stated in the beginning of this presentation, we want you to look carefully, dig deep, and experience Lancer Nation as we do every day.
Though you'll be extremely busy and challenged thoroughly examining what our facility and programs have to offer, please make sure you also take time to meet our family. We recognize that there are areas that need improvement, but for the most part, we feel this is a really good place for our students to grow, our staff to work, and the town of Lunen Derry to educate and promote a better future for all of us.
So, thank you for being here and putting in your time to help us become a better community and again, welcome.
And again, welcome.
So I spoke about the thorough assessment that we were given by these eighteen educators that showed up here. And without reading the eleven pages of Schedule Two, I want to give you an idea of what was in there. We had twenty student escorts leading faculty members, visiting committee members through three classes apiece. We had twenty-two students that met with the visiting committee in small-group instruction. We had thirty-six teachers interviewed one-on-one. So, you know, there's no hiding anything. These, each visiting committee member interviewed two teachers one-on-one for at least a half hour apiece. We had sixty teachers were seen during the student shadowing. The other hundred-plus teachers all were seen because the committee kept track of who they had seen because we set a tracking system up for them in the room, and they could just check off the picture. And somebody hadn't seen a teacher, they'd say, "Send somebody to go see Jester, send somebody to go see Carrie Ella." And so every teacher got seen, nobody was hidden. On top of that, twenty-four more teachers were seen in small-group meetings. And I don't know if Mr. Parent mentioned this, but Dr. Marousse checked on the pre-visiting. He selected the people that would be seen. He selected the student escorts, he selected the teachers. So he said, "Give me a roster of your teachers. I'll take this one, this one, this one." There was no stacking the deck. So they saw statistically-uniformed population of Londonderry High School teachers and students, and they came away impressed. What other kind of meetings do we have? There was a meeting with some members of the school board Sunday night, meeting with parents Sunday night. They watched a presentation by the marching band and color guard. They got an infrastructure tour on Monday, and general facility tours on Monday. The visiting committee met with the district leadership. They met with the sending school personnel. At least, at least one administrator from every other school in the district showed up to talk to the committee. They wanted to know where the students were coming from that ended up at Londonderry High School. And we thought that that was just great support from the other buildings in the district. They met with support services, maintenance director, head custodian, food services director. They had a library media meeting with the library media center staff, as long as Sue Ballard, the library media and tech director, and Sean Coe, the IT director, and some of their staff. They met with the guidance director, the counselors, the nurse, the school to community counselor, the sped coordinator, the director of pupil services. That's just all by Monday afternoon those meetings happened. Then, at the end of school on Monday, again, the visiting committee met with every standards committee. Remember, we, the teachers, were broken up into seven standards committees to evaluate the seven standards. Now, Monday afternoon, there's thirty teachers for school-to-community, you know, support in one room with the NIAS people talking about school-to-community support, and thirty teachers for leadership, and thirty teachers for mission statement, and thirty teachers for all seven of those, of those standards. The next day, oh, and then after that meeting, still on Monday, the school leadership with the principal, the four APs, the curriculum coordinators, guidance director, athletic directors, sped coordinator, music director, school career counselor, and the Londonderry Education Association president. So not only do we have, like, the school side, we had the education association side represented as well. They met with administrative assistants, aides, welcome center people, and then went home and worked till, went back to the hotel and worked till about ten o'clock each night because they had to compile their observations and then vote on them by consensus. So no random observation would make its way into the report. They had to agree. Did everybody notice that the educational style was such-and-such? Did anybody notice something negative? And so they, they had to vote on consensus to get anything into the report so that nobody could hijack the report. So, I think that covers the visit, and then Dr. Lindley Susi will talk about the follow-up.
Now that we're in the follow-up stages, NIAS has provided us with a strategic planning process for school improvement. As we work to complete the two-year progress report, which is due in October 2012, and the five-year progress report that's due in March of 2015, we're reminded that NIAS is not a four-day visit, but rather a path of continuous self-reflection and improvement. The NIAS report is not something we read, celebrate, and then put on a shelf. Rather, it's a guide as we continue professional dialogue and best practice. The standards committees have reconvened to look at how to meet the recommendations as well as how to continue the commendations. When these committees met at the beginning of the month, their initial charge was to review the report and begin a professional conversation. When these groups meet again tomorrow afternoon, they'll determine their course of action. Within each committee, subcommittees will form to investigate our future direction. For each recommendation, we determine by the end of 2011-2012 school year whether the recommendation is completed, in progress, or planned for the future. NIAS provides the topics for us to investigate, and in some cases, we might determine the best course of action for Londonderry High School is to change the way we're currently dealing with an aspect of being a comprehensive high school. But in other cases, we might investigate alternatives and ultimately determine the path on which we currently find ourselves is actually the right one for Londonderry. Either way, professional dialogue will have taken place, conversations which will involve teachers, administrators, and the community. Consciously reflecting on the why of current practice will not only make us better professionals, it will make our already-strong high school the best we can be. As we look over the next four years, standards committees will continue to meet regularly and with purpose as we seek to sustain the commendations and to address the recommendations.
As Tony had mentioned, the visiting committee built its professional judgment on evidence collected from a variety of sources. They conducted a comprehensive view of the self-study report. Fifty-four hours of shadowing, thirty-six students for a day, forty-five hours of additional classroom observations, multiple informal observations, tours of the facility, individual meetings with thirty-six teachers about their work and instructional approaches, group meetings with students, parents, and community members, district administrators and school board members, and the examination of student work, including a selection of work collected by the school. We had these, we call them "crubs" of materials. Steve can explain what a "crub" is later, but essentially, it's a box filled with student work from each discipline, and they reviewed that in the evenings. All reports within the sixty-three-page final report was reached by consensus of the entire committee, and their findings, again, are on, are supported by multiple sources, including the recommendations and commendations. And I want to just quickly reference, in the full report, Londonderry High School received fifty-eight commendations and thirty-one recommendations. In the four-page letter from the NIAS Commission granting us continued accreditation, the Commission referenced thirty-eight of those recommendations and highlighted just ten recommendations. So if you take a look at this chart from 2000 to 2010, while Kim hands out to the board the Commission's report. In 2000, this is just to show how far we've come in the past ten years. In 2000, the accreditation report, we received just thirty-five commendations and had seventy recommendations to address, requiring the school to commit us, to submit a special progress report within six months' time. As you can see, within each standard, there were significant gains and improvement over these ten years. We have really come so far in the expansion of our program, services, and commitment from all shareholders. And I think several months back, we encapsulated this in the Lancer Spirit, the NIAS newspaper, and it chronicles that ten-year journey. But again, if you look at each standard, we really have raised the bar and want to continue to do so. So our plan is, in addition to the standards committees remaining intact, we're putting together professional learning communities to explore more in-depth recommendations. And our plan, again, will entail addressing the recommendations in the two- and five-year progress report. But all of our work really is a mission of authenticity. We want the work that we're doing as we move forward to be meaningful because it's something we believe in and something that's going to improve our school. Okay, now to the final report. We listed in each standard all of their commendations and recommendations, but we're just gonna highlight a few. So, Tony, if you could go to the mission expectations page. For example, we received a commendation on the promotion and visibility of mission and expectations throughout the school. As I mentioned before, it was evident to them this wasn't just a mission statement that we threw on a placard in a classroom or in several areas of the building. This is something we believe in. We reference it every day in our morning announcements. It's visible to our students. I think they believe in the message, and it really helps guide us in all the decisions that we make. Another commendation we received was the numerous program, services, and student activities that reflect the mission and expectations as a living document. We continue to reference that in all that we do. As far as their recommendations went, they'd like us to develop specific indicators that assess the school's progress in achieving the school-wide civic and social expectations. We have school-wide rubrics which measure the academic expectations we have, and now we need to take the next step in measuring. We know our kids are civic-minded. We know they're involved in a lot of social, co-curricular, extracurricular activities, but we want to be able to document that. And also to create a formal process for regular review of the school's mission statement and expectations for student learning using a variety of data, and our mission statement standard is doing that.
When it comes to curriculum, reading through the curriculum report, there are really two striking findings which in many ways summarize all the recommendations and the commendations. The first of these is that Londonderry High School staff has been juggling many different topics over the past few years, and it's now time to regroup and look at each of these pieces a little bit more carefully. The second is that Londonderry High School provides numerous avenues for all students to access the school's curriculum. The commendations and recommendations fall under those two umbrellas, and NIAS validated what we had already determined as part of our self-study. We've worked diligently to have authentic competencies in all courses, and we'll maintain that direction. We offer a plethora of opportunities to our students in a number of areas, and now we need to focus professional development on one or two prioritized initiatives at a time. NIAS has suggested some of the directions for that, but what form that takes specifically will now be determined through professional learning communities forming at the high school. Recommendations under the curriculum standard tie back to our self-study also and our areas we anticipated would shape the direction of our professional conversations in the future. Suggestions such as we look at how we balance depth of understanding over breadth of knowledge in all courses ties in with our literacy initiative and will be part of our exploring alternative scheduling options. As we look at our curriculum mapping, teachers will look to allow for balance to permit the differentiated instruction that all our students need. The recommendation regarding curriculum coordinators will be an area for future investigation as will the need to better focus our professional development on individual topics and allow for follow-through with any recommendations. NIAS doesn't tell us how or even whether to change. They just point out to us directions that we might want to explore. Looking at the instruction standard, recommendations in that category are, again, not surprising to us. The creation of formal structures for regular discussion about instruction is a suggestion we know we need to investigate and will encompass the vehicle for looking at the other recommendations, including those that deal directly with helping our students remain engaged, self-directed learners, as well as how we more fully integrate technology into our curriculum. When it comes to instruction, NIAS validated what we know to be true. Our highly-skilled teachers do amazing things in classrooms every day in the building. Teachers use feedback to inform instructional practice, including professional dialogue with colleagues in-house and outside of our walls. Classes across the board emphasize higher-order thinking skills. To steal a few sentences from the report, "The quality of instruction at LHS is the single most important factor affecting the quality of student learning, the achievement of expectations for student learning, the delivery of curriculum, and the assessment of student progress. There's personalized instruction in many classrooms, and it's clear teachers know their students well and strive to use various methodologies to best appeal to their learning styles. In fact, many parents report it feels as though their child is the only child in the school as the result of the level of personalized attention." Those are powerful statements. They prove that NIAS saw some of the wonderful things that we're doing on a daily basis at Londonderry High School, and that our further direction now will be, make more of a concerted effort as we increase the good things that are happening and find ways to best meet the needs of all of our students in our very diverse population.
Moving on to assessment, it's interesting, the commendations. If you look at number one, where it said "varied assessments", which is really important, I think, because they recognize right away that there were a lot of different learning styles that we have and a lot of different teaching styles to try to get to those students. And of course, by high school, hopefully you think the students begin to take an active process in that. "I'm good at this, I'm, you know, this is really my strength. Those kind of tests are tough on me." And they know to work harder, focus differently on that. So the fact that NIAS mentioned that first is kind of, you know, an important one and significant. If you look at number four, the idea that we are, you know, working into school-wide rubrics. School-wide rubrics is a fairly new thing with us. We've been working on them for, oh, maybe four or five years now, really trying to get them so they're workable, so they're usable, and a number of teachers, you know, worked with them and tried to really use them as best they could. And NIAS noted that. They noted the fact that we're trying to bring those in, and, you know, there are a lot of samples. And again, they picked the samples really randomly, so they could have picked up a number of them that didn't have that, but looking at everything that they had done, looking at a whole body of work, they saw that we do, using school-wide rubrics more and more. And also, they noted the use of, in number five, the X2 Aspen Program, the grading program, that students can follow their grades, parents can follow their grades, and the fact that, you know, we've kind of invested ourselves in X2. It's nice to see that they recognize that as an effective part of our program. As far as recommendations, really, number two is one that's interesting to look at because it's a real challenge for us going forward, is use data and specific indicators to measure student success in achieving the school's civic and social expectations. As Jason mentioned, we're, you know, we know the students do a lot of good things, but how do you measure that? How do you say, "Well, you donated your hair, so you get a point. You brought in food to the food bank. You're on a sports team." Perhaps, you know, you have to go home and take care of younger siblings, and you can't participate in after-school events. How then do we measure your civic responsibility considering you're really taking care of your family? Or economically, you can't bring in a lot of food to the food bank. Maybe you receive food from it. How do you then say, "Well, that student has to do something else"? There's got to be a way to measure it. We'll find a way, but that's really one of our big challenges going forward, is how do we fairly measure that and really have a system where that's going to work out? And it's really, it's one that kind of jumps out at us because they mention it a few different places, and we know that, and we know how do we make that measurement happen? But we'll look for it. Also, in number six, where it says, you know, again, "Design and implement a formal method to inform all students and their families about individual students and the school's progress in meeting all school-wide expectations." You know, beyond sort of academic progress report, report card, is there something that we can sort of do to expand on that? And that's another one that we're looking at and seeing, you know, can we develop more of a formal program? Can we go deeper with that and make it very uniquely Londonderry? Look at a lot of samples from a lot of places, but then make it incredibly good because it's ours, it's ours, which, you know, then that's really what we're looking for there. The next standard, leadership. It's kind of interesting, if you look at two, three, and four, "The principal's leadership and focus on student learning, the support and visionary leadership of the superintendent, and teacher and administrator leadership in sustaining continuous improvement of the school." They're sort of looking there at all the levels. And again, you know, having really a very low filter, I mean, the fact that any teacher could come and approach, you know, Mr. Greenberg and ask him a question, you know, could be exhausting, they could ask all kinds of things, or going in and seeing Jason about any little concern they happen to have. You know, it's got to be an exhausting process, but all the way through, they really commend us for that. The fact that these people are always available, the door is always open, and they realize that's a real exhausting process, yet, you know, the school thrives on it. It's what makes us very special and very approachable, and that everyone feels they've got a piece in what's going on here, all the way through. And on the next page, number seven, where it says "A regular recognition of student achievement in multiple areas," you know, which is really a proven best practice, you know, if you can, you know, publish student work regularly and really show student achievement, really focus on, you know, I mean, academics is our main job, and the fact that they noticed a few places that we really focus on academics, and academic achievement is recognized in our school. And again, in number nine, "The effective involvement of school and community constituents in the decision-making process." The fact that there is that openness, that people can contribute, that they feel if they come in and say something, or they approach the PTSO and talk to them, you know, they have a way to get in and talk to people, and people will listen. They come to the school board with a concern, and they'll get a response, and people will talk to them, and they'll feel whatever minor issue even they feel they have, it can be resolved and discussed. So those are really important, and I think they just show a whole range of how everyone is open from top to bottom, which is what makes us, another thing that makes us really special. In their recommendations, they mention a few that just look at some other things. In number one, where it says "Investigate schedule alternatives," looking at things like block scheduling. And again, where it's an investigative recommendation, we don't have to adopt it, it's something we have to investigate. We may look at all sorts of schedule alternatives and think, "You know what, we've got the best system right now." But we will look at them all, and that's really what an investigative recommendation is, not so much you've got to change, but you've just got to act on it and look, get over. Same thing with number four is a little bit different, where they're talking about a school-wide formal program to ensure all students have an adult in addition to their guidance counselor who personalizes their educational experience. And again, a lot of models look for, the people look at advisory models, different models they look at, and they're really, you know, NIESC is looking at us to say, "Is there another way you can do it?" And again, it's just something we're charged with. You know, we've had them come, they've done this, this visit, they've talked to us, now we've got this to look forward to and think, "How can we go forward? How can we, you know, make this happen?" And again, we'll do it, you know, uniquely in a Londonderry way, it'll just take some time and some study and really go through it and bring it together.
All right, I'll talk about the school resources for learning, and when it comes to school resources for learning, that primarily dealt with the guidance staff, the health staff, the library media staff, and the special education departments in our school. And the findings were overwhelmingly positive, they talked about the exemplary media staff, their passion for literacy and helping teachers instruct literacy, and the high regard that parents in the community have for our library media staff. So they didn't just look at our library media staff, but they polled the parents, and the parents were very happy with the support and the services that they were getting. They cited more than once the frequent communication between the school, the district, and the parents. They talked about the district newsletter, the principal's newsletter, the guidance newsletter, how parents get information off of the X2 Aspen Program, and all the special programs that were available to students for their success. They also talked about the medical staff, and how the medical staff personalized, the personalized caregiving that they gave, that they were dedicated, and how the medical staff modeled respect for the students. And I thought that was a very powerful statement, because here we are producing young adults into model respect is a very important thing. Now, there were a few recommendations, but if you read them, what you'll notice is that none of recommendations one, two, or three say that any of those four groups could do anything better. It doesn't say the health staff could do something better, or the guidance staff could do something better, or the library staff could do something better. It says, "We should provide them more resources, provide more counseling options for the guidance, provide more health space for confidential consultations for the health people, provide more collaboration time for the library media staff." So actually, when you look at those recommendations, they're not even recommendations for those groups to improve, they're recommendations for the leadership to act, the district to act, and give those people more tools to do their job. When you look at the community resources for learning, what the NIESC visiting committee focused on was the partnership that Londonderry High School has with parents, with businesses, with community organizations, and with higher education institutions that provide for the success of our students. They spoke very highly of the partnership with parents and other community organizations in all aspects of our children's education. They, I remember the, the visiting committee asking some members of the school board, "Well, how did you pay to go to China? Where did you come up with the money to go to China?" And the answer was, "Well, eighty percent of that was from fundraising and private donations, and they were just flawed." So here, they saw the strong relationship that Londonderry High School has with the community. They talked about the excellent efforts of our grounds and maintenance and custodial crew maintaining our facility. They were surprised, because many of them came from newer high schools that weren't as well-maintained as our high school, and they were very impressed with how our high school happened. In fact, during Sunday night, when they were walking around for the visits, the lights went out in the hallways. And some of the visiting committee said, "What's going on here?" And one of the teachers commented, "Oh, well, we have an energy-saving program where at this time the lights go out." And we all know that, and we walk around with, you know, one-fourth the number of lights on. And they were like, "Wow, that's incredible that you're that organized." They were very impressed with our maintenance community. In terms of recommendations, there really are just two. And the first one, "Continue the quest for an auditorium to adequately support the performing arts." For people who are new to Londonderry, like me, I've only lived in Londonderry seven years, this is the fourth time that the NIESC committee has asked us to really give it a good effort to get an auditorium for our students. Here we are with the largest band east of the Mississippi, and, you know, well-known for our music program throughout the nation, and we don't have an auditorium. We're the only class all school without an auditorium. It's crazy if you were to explain that to somebody. But yet, here we are. So forty years running, the recommendation is, "Go ahead and find a way to get yourself an auditorium." So Mr. Parent is going to reconvene an auditorium committee to investigate that, and then work with the district and work with the community, and see what options are available to get an auditorium for our school.
Finally, here's the, thank you, the NIESC timeline, which takes us up to today, and this is the public unveiling of the report. Again, we were really excited and anxious to present this information as soon as the visit ended, but it took the committee, visiting committee team a while to write the report and send it to the commission, send it off to us for our staff to debrief, but it could not have gone better. I sincerely mean that, and that was thanks to the collective efforts of the entire community. Tomorrow, we'll continue to go back to work with this on our early release day and develop our plan, as mentioned previously. In conclusion, I just want to read the final quote from the visiting committee at the end of their overview of findings. "Londonderry High School is a proud school community that possesses a school climate that other schools should strive to attain. The dedication and effort on the part of every stakeholder is evident. Continuing efforts focused on making clear connections in the school's curriculum, instruction, and assessments with the school's mission and expectations will bring the school to even higher levels, and that's something we aspire to for 2020." But right now, the next step is to submit the October 2012 two-year report in addressing the recommendations. I want to thank the entire staff, the student body, parents, community members, district office, and the school board. This really was a collaborative effort, and it could not be accomplished any other way. We really needed everyone's support, and I think we really shined in this visit, and we have some information that we can use to continue to grow. Right now, I welcome any comments or suggestions, and thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the board? Nancy, John?
Thank you very much, that was very thorough, and I can't speak for all of the board, but I'm certainly very impressed and encouraged with what we have available in this district, and certainly how we are reviewed by our colleagues. I do, I do have one question, and this may be more for Nate. In reviewing the report, with respect to what you were talking about, with your curriculum coordinators being overburdened and not having enough professional time to devote to their work, I'd like to know if we have a plan to address that?
My plan is to continue the way it is, be very honest.
Okay.
With the curriculum coordinator set up as it exists now. If, just a little history, the year before I came, there were department heads at the high school. Board made a decision at that point in time to eliminate the department head structure and put in place curriculum coordinators. I would think down the road, it was one, two, I think, three years ago, we looked at some alternative administrative structures as far as curriculum coordination was concerned at the high school. Right now, this is one of the issues that I have difference with as far as the committee is concerned. Considering the curriculum coordination at the high school, the curriculum coordinator we have at the middle school, and the function of the C3 committee with a focus on curriculum, I, at this juncture, and knowing what our fiscal situation is going to be over the next couple of years, I'm not prepared, really, at this point, to support a change in that structure. I think one of the things that we have to look at is some additional methodology for providing some additional time for people in the department to meet and have cross-meeting, but I'm not prepared, at least over the next couple of years, to make any recommendation to the board about adjusting curriculum coordinators' positions. And I don't think I'm telling tales out of school, because Kim and Jay and Diane know how I feel about it at this point, so.
Do you echo the same sentiments for the recommendation where they ask us to provide sufficient time for professional planning and teacher collaboration?
Well, I think you have to look at it in a number of ways. I think we have provided, over the course of an entire year, twelve-month year, significant amounts of time for curriculum development and curriculum coordination, especially when you take a look at the amount of time that we devote during the summer. I think one of the things that we can look at is continued ways in which we look to use our release time, and also perhaps ways of looking at how we schedule our preparation periods to allow for increased discussion and coordination within departments and across departments. But right now, to be very practical about it, if you were to increase the amount of time by adding more time in the day, you're really looking at a fiscal constraint that we're operating under. So if you were to, let's say, increase the number of prep periods that a teacher had during the day, so for every additional prep period you give them, that's the equivalent of about twenty percent of their time in a given day. So if you were to give a teacher an additional prep period every day of the week, that's basically twenty percent of the position you would have to look at. So for every five teachers, you're in effect hiring another person. So fiscally, at this point, I think that's an issue. I think one of the things that the high school will be looking at, and certainly would support a district office, are there different ways in which we can organize ourselves to provide additional time? Perhaps after school, looking at it in a more cost-effective way, some stipends along the lines for specific, job-specific things. So for instance, if in fact we're looking at, the example, addressing particular instructional strategies regarding the utilization of technology and the integration of science and mathematics. It's a, it's a specific thing that we could provide curriculum development opportunities for people to do above and beyond the school day or during, during the week. So I think those may be some of the ways that we have to look at it, at least in the short term, because I think fiscally, that would be a better way for us to do it, at least in the short term, because of what I perceive anyways of financial constraints. That's my two cents.
I have others going.
Jason, what did you work on?
That it is a daunting task to prepare, and I understand why it happens every ten years. Very few things surprise me, so I know that our self-study was really authentic, that that was a powerful tool to really help us look at what we do and how we can improve. So I was glad that I wasn't surprised with the visiting committee's findings, because it was already stated in our report months before. So that was interesting, and I'm glad that they encouraged, and we met with Jen Allison, the commissioner, who encouraged us to explore those things. She was impressed, because not only do we want to address our recommendations and continue to improve in that capacity, but we want to sustain the commendations we've received. This is significant, and we're going to figure out how we're going to do that in tight budget times with, you know, a decreased staff level and reductions in that capacity. So there's going to be a lot of professional discourse, so I just learned a lot about best practice, about why we should value these standards that our kids should believe in and know what we're trying to promote and understand it. And the process itself was very enlightening for me, and I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to that, but that's what I learned.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
Just to comment on what Nate had said earlier, when you mentioned the idea of, you know, not having enough collaboration time, and, you know, a lot of, I mean, when they spoke to people, I think a lot of the questions may have been more short-sighted, like, "In the past year, have you collaborated a lot with your department members?" And of course, the past two years, a lot of the time, which is, again, limited, as you say, was given over to NIESC preparation. We had a lot of meetings where we met and built the NIESC report and the standards, so we had to give over time to that. So if they said to someone, "Well, you've only met twice with your department," because, you know, that seems like a low number. But I think as we go forward, and part of, you know, our all staying together on the committee is not to say it stops now, but we'll have people looking at that and saying, "What percentage of our meeting time is dedicated to, you know, working among the other faculty? What part's given over to NIESC?" So when we get to the next report, we'll be able to say statistically, here's where we are. So when they do talk to people and they say, "Yeah, those last two years are very much NIESC-centered," you know, the time goes to that, and again, you only have so much time, whether it's a faculty meeting or early release time. So it may have been a little skewed, especially if they talked to someone who's been there two or three years, and they thought, "Wow, we've had a lot of time given over to that."
I think, I think the other thing, just to pick a moment, Steve's saying, I think increased use of technology for wikis will also, and those kinds of, for lack of a better term, chat rooms and logs, for people to focus in on looking, on carrying on professional conversations or work directly related, I think will also assist too. So I think looking at it in, in a sense, in a hybrid model, where not only the time that's already built in, but also cyber time, for lack of a, I think, will also be of assistance to us as far as the planning is concerned and collaboration and work. Because, you know, one of the other things too, is we have a hundred and eighty-seven day contracted year, all right? So we've got time built in for these, for additional collaboration and focus. And also to, you know, constantly reviewing as to how we run department meetings, how we run faculty meetings, how we run the in-service programs, I think will be, will be of assistance. How we handle the release time, how we handle the early release days, how we handle the full-day workshops. I think those are all combinations. So I think what we've got to do is, and Steve is absolutely correct, an enormous amount of time was just consumed with, as rightly so, because this, it gives you a magnificent review point to work off of. That is going to give us some additional time, and the fact that there is an additional direction that says, "Okay, here, based on the report, here are some priorities you got to address and work on and focus in on that," I think will be of great assistance to us.
I'd also say that it takes, it takes hours and hours to put this together, but if we put in two hours, Jason put in three, if we put in three, he put in four. Jason did an incredible job sort of motivating not only the whole staff, but certainly asked us as a committee to go on and on and make sure this thing came out perfectly. And we really, you know, every time we worked on it, we thought, you know, we got to work for Jason, we got this thing going, he's got, he's got a vision, he's got a sense of what's happening here, we got to make this happen. And it was really, it was, it was amazing to work with him this closely for that amount of time, and find out what a great leader he is. So it was really impressive.
Thank you.
I have to say, I've read several of these reports, and this is the most glowing report I've read over the years. It's very impressive. And when we look at it, and Jason, what's this, your third or third year? Third year as a principal at the high school, that's impressive right there, that brought the team together and came out with this wonderful results with the great effort of the team, that congratulations to you and your team on this report.
Thank you.
I also would like to echo Ryan's sentiment to you and the staff and the community. Anyone that's gone through an audit knows that it's a very painful process, and for you to come out the way that you did, it's, hats off. Especially where I see the feedback that you get, you know, if you, I'm assuming that these, these folks go through different schools and they're in different states, and for them to come back with the type of recommendations that they come back with only tells me that you're head and shoulders above anyone else at this point that they have seen. And one of the, the comments that I'd like to make, and I have a question for you, is it seems very apparent that they're, they're focusing on metrics and key performance indicators based on what you're doing, so that you can track and they can kind of see the next level of how you're going to manage this. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're going to be doing, short-term, long-term, to fulfill those requirements as far as metrics and key performance indicators are concerned?
Sure, yeah. Well, in the short term, we're going to convene, reconvene our standards committees who have done the legwork in building the self-study report and looking at, reviewing the commendations and recommendations. So they're going to have a professional dialogue about how to address those over two years. We're actually going to keep that, those standards intact over four years to map out a plan and create viable ways that we can track performance. And those conversations are just starting now, as far as we, we know we have it, and we need to build in a system to track that. And we need student input and parent input as well with it. I don't have a, an answer for you as far as what those are going to look like, because those, those conversations are just, just getting underway. I can tell you, after the fifth year, we will dissolve those standards and then move to look towards the 2020 visit, where the standards are slightly changed and it's now more 21st century skills. And Peter just was on a visit, in fact, that might have been the pilot school, Mary McValley, who underwent the new visitation schedule. But I will certainly not make the same mistake as far as, there was a lot crunched into that, that two-year self-study. And again, years five through 10, you really need to be building up towards that, so it doesn't feel so compressed. And you need to take your time to anticipate, having gone through this now in detail, we're going to certainly lay that out. And I want to show the same improvement that we've seen from 2000 to 2010 over the next 10 years. And I'll have hopefully an answer for you, you know, soon enough. I'm sorry, I don't have a, a very detailed one now, but we, we need to go to work to, to look at that, how we're going to track it.
Hey, can we expect to see something by next school year?
Yes, because we're, essentially, the two-year report is really fourteen months, because we're going to have these final two months to, to digest the report, have people specifically assigned to address the recommendations, bring that back, and then reach consensus with the faculty. We really only have the school year, because it's due the following October. So once we, school rolls around again, we're there. You're welcome.
Geez, sounds like all you're going to be here in ten years, huh? I think that, I'm pleased that the NEAS committee recognized a number of, a number of things that we all take for granted. And that is the extremely professional staff. I mean, I hear this talk about development and all that, but then I also hear that they, you know, they all came in on Sunday to participate with us. And I know they all work at night, and they all, you know, collaborate on their own time. At least the majority of the professional staff does, just as, just as we all do in our positions, to collaborate and work with others and to continue growing. And, and I appreciate that. Sometimes it doesn't need to be formal. I also appreciate the fact that the NEAS committee recognized how much we do with so little, and particularly commending the janitorial staff and keeping that school clean and making sure that it's in good repair. You know, a stick-built school without walls in the 1970s isn't typically something that's going to be real easy to take care of. And the fact that they, they see that and they see, you know, how well, how well our staff does, I think is a big credit to the custodial staff and to our, our district office here. Like the district office, sometimes the auditorium issue is a bit of a badge of courage, because it, it shows how conservative and how Yankee we are. And I do know that I could certainly appreciate a new auditorium as soon as we can get one. But the NEAS staff also, in our conversations with the, with the board, understood the, the economy that we have today. And we talked about that. And even today, driving around Londonderry, the number of homes whose lawns are not mowed and are vacant or abandoned is pretty, pretty, I'm not going to say impressive, but pretty depressing. So to make a move at this time, and I think they understood that, wouldn't, wouldn't be prudent, wouldn't be realistic. We do need some growth in our economy, and we do need to get the economic engine here in, in Londonderry running. So I challenge everyone here, in the board and in the school district, to support finding ways to broaden our tax base so that we could bring in companies. Let's be a friendly town. Let's get people to move here. We've heard a lot about that in the news. So you, I don't think any of us would mind putting, putting a company's name on the side of the auditorium if they were going to pay for it. So think outside the box and, you know, do something different, like Londonderry always does. But to all of you guys, especially Jason, for your leadership and your, your energy on this. It's, nice work.
I'd just like to add my own two cents. I want to compliment Jay and the high school faculty and the leadership team that put in enormous amounts of time on this. Very dedicated, very thoughtful, very honest, and I think it showed in the result, it showed in the presentation. And I think it's going to stand well as, as we continue to move ahead. Guys did a great job.
Jay, one, one question. Now that we've been through this process, including the years of preparation, and we can look down the barrel of another ten-year cycle. If you could, how would you recommend the process be changed so that it presented as solid an insight into the quality of our school or a school and maybe consumed a little bit less of the oxygen that was eaten up preparing for it?
I, I think I would encourage more, invite more community members into the school to become familiar. I think we do a good job educating our, our community with newsletters and things like that, but pulling more students and, and parents. And they were a lot involved in the process. But getting them more involved into the standards that we adhere to, why we adhere to them, putting them in the know would, would be a good first step in taking a more collaborative approach with that. I like that it's over ten years. Again, I'm anxious to turn the corner after submitting the five-year report. That means we will address the recommendations in some capacity, and then we build that, that preparation over five years. So I think the timeline is right. And, and I, I'd like to, it, it felt like, though we had wonderful support, again, I'd like more people to be in the know and, and understand this. We, we even had simple questions as, why do we need to have an accredited school? You know, and some of the examples to have, you wouldn't send your family member to, or you wouldn't want to, maybe go to a hospital that wasn't accredited. We don't want to send our, our kids to a school that's not accredited. Colleges certainly, and universities look, look to an accredited school. And again, we want to use that. I, I think it's money that's well-spent in this process.
Are all the steps that NEAS asks you to go through necessary and as efficient and effective as possible? Or could they be improved from the evaluator's side?
I think that they've been very supportive. Do you want to talk, they, they, they're right there with answers. They come up. But Janet Allison personally came, because our report was held off a bit through no fault of our own. The visiting committee took a little extra time to get that report out to us, so we missed a follow-up seminar. She personally came out, this is the commissioner of NEAS, came to our site to talk with us. She's friendly with Nate, talks with him fairly frequently. And again, they're very attentive to, to our needs, our concerns, and generally want to help. So I feel that there's great support from the commission. Our colleagues from around New Hampshire and New England are invested in the process. Our own staff members are, I mean, we got Peter to go out to a, a visit and, and explore, so that's not an easy task there. He's, for him to join a visiting committee is impressive, in my estimation, so.
I didn't go to bed at 10 o'clock either.
And I think, I think too, they gave us a lot of room. At first, we would call them a number of times, like, oh, what about this indicated? You know, these seem to overlap. What about this? And they kept coming back and saying, you know, the, the real sort of tightness of the, the standards is set up so that a school that really isn't invested in it can kind of make their way through. But you really read it and interpret it the way you want to. Make it sound like your school. And so after a while, we, we began to answer our own questions. People would come and say, could you ask NEAS if they really think we should do such and such a self-study? And we'd look at it and go, okay, looking at the school as we look at it, here's what you should do. And NEAS was completely, you know, going along with that. Like, if you're working hard on this and you're building your own report, we support you. So there's nowhere where they tripped us up and said, oh, you missed number six. Like, how could you miss that? We were pretty thorough about looking it over, but they gave us a lot of room as far as, if you don't think this represents your school, don't include it. Like, you put the things in that are, so the book reads authentically, it is your school, and it'll end up working out on the end. And it did. I mean, everything they said came through for us, so they really did in that sense. You know, we thought, are they going, like we said about, you know, not having, having too many pages. Are they going to throw us at the end? Are they going, and they didn't. They were like, nope, you put in a lot of work and it's appreciated. So it really was, I don't think there's anywhere where they, you know, tried to, you know, slip us up or there was a step that we felt, it didn't seem like it was logical. It seemed like it all came together by the end.
The chair met with me every day and just said, if there's anything you'd like us to explore in addition to what we're finding, we're willing to do that. Anything that you want to see in the report that, that we could offer for suggestions, is you can use it as a tool to drive. So they were just very supportive. I was very impressed with the, the commission, with the visiting committee. It's certainly, it's helpful to have, you know, a chair that had, had been on, that has chaired fourteen visits. We believed in what he was doing and how he was doing it. So there was relief there that you had someone that was in charge and was going to navigate his team through, through that visit.
Anybody else, anything? Questions from the floor? All right, well, thank you very much. Congratulations on an outstanding job, and have a nice ten years.
Thanks.
Thank you. Nate, I, I understand you wanted to sing the praises of man's best friend.
Yeah, I kind of feel funny bringing up this topic after the NEAS report, but.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda.
But because of the lateness of the hour, let me just make a couple of brief comments on this. We had a young student at one of our elementary schools send us a letter concerned because people evidently on the fields are not picking up after their animals. Result was, the young man had a very interesting day. Let me put it to you that way. We have had also a number of other experiences in a number of our other schools where, because people's failure to pick up after their pets has caused issues back in the school. I think in one incident, we had, what, 22, 23 in one school in one day, where the custodians, well, basically wound up helping to clean kids' sneakers and shoes. So, you know, it's several years back, we had a very long series of discussions, if I remember correctly, about man's best friend having free access to our fields and how it was going to be controlled at big events. I'm just putting this out at this point to make everybody aware of it. We may want to, at some other day, come back and discuss it further, because from my perspective, it's get, in, in a number of cases, it's getting to be a health and safety issue. And, and part, and part of it is because some people are really not following through on what they should be doing. And now we have situations where either students or faculty members who go out on the fields during recess or during the day wind up having a very interesting experience when they come back into the school, to put it mildly. And so part of, part of my issue tonight is to raise awareness again, to remind people they shouldn't be, if they're going to have their dogs on our fields, they should clean up after them. Because we do, in some instances, we have very young children running around outside. Okay, and that's interesting. And for us to consider down the road, and I'm only doing this because of the lateness of the hour, is whether or not, and this is Steve's favorite thing, should put up signs like, you know, clean up after your dog if we're going to continue to have it, if nothing else to remind people. Or whether or not somewhere down the road, I know this was an interesting discussion, whether or not we want to in fact revisit the process. I'm not looking to wind up on animal planet, but just, you know, kind of bringing this to everybody's attention. And it's, and it, it sounds silly, but for the little kids, particularly at the elementary level, it is a big issue for them. And it's a health and safety issue, and on a number of occasions, be very blunt about it, our custodians are helping, spending a lot of time with our little first, second, and third graders, helping them clean off their shoes, because they were just running around playing and somebody forgot to clean up after their, their pet. So that's, I bring it to the board at this point as informational kind of thing, and we can come back. But for the board just to think about it, it's late. You know, even down to a simple thing of putting signs up and saying, if you're going, if the board decides, you know, continue to allow, that it's an opportunity for people to go out and have their pets, put signs up that says, hey, you shouldn't, you better pick up after your pet. There are statutes on the book where if we catch somebody doing that, that we can report them and they can be fined for it. So that's just something to keep in mind. And I know, you know, we just had this great report about high school accreditation, and we're talking about it, but for little kids, it's a big issue. I mean, really. So anyhow, there you go.
Collins, questions? Anybody? Ron?
I think it's important to take to heart Nate's statement that it is illegal at this point. It is something that can be fined for, and it's just common courtesy. So I'd appreciate everybody passing the word that you got to poop your scoop. Scoop your poop. Clean up after your dog.
I'd like to take that a step further in my own, you know, refined and subtle way here. When the question of prohibiting dogs from school property came up three years ago, I was adamant against it, because I don't think that the solution to a problem of, of dogs fouling fields is to ban the responsible dog owners and the, and their animals because of the carelessness or lack of responsibility of a few in, a, a few other people. But at the same time, I think Nate makes some valid points about the need to maintain the fields for what their primary use is, which obviously is the school kids. So folks, if you're going to bring your dogs on school property, if you want to continue to have that option open to you, you've got to be responsible owners. You can't just walk in, foul the grounds, and expect to be able to come back year after year after year. Sooner or later, a majority of, of the, of the board is going to say, look, we've tried, there's nothing more we can do, so you just can't have a dog here. Don't soil it for everybody. Be responsible if you're going to be on the school grounds. It's really that simple. Forgive me, I'll step off my soapbox now. Nate, one more thing I wanted to bring up under questions announcements is I got a call the other day from a reporter asking for reaction to comments regarding the school district and town working together on, on various initiatives, areas of collaboration. Can you, can you talk a little bit about what's going on there?
You know, on work day, everyday coordination, I think we coordinate very well with police department, fire department, public works. There's just, there's no issues between us at all. Department heads get along extremely well. We've got great relations. Anytime we have an issue that's related to the police, they're right there. If I have questions regarding anything related to the fire department, police, public works, or Peter has, or Chuck has, everybody's right there. And, and the reverse is also true. We're happy to help out wherever we can. You know, the last experience we had at, let's say, a, a board council level was our very interesting board of discussion regarding the access center, I think, was, was one. But on a day-to-day basis, we get along fine with, with the town guys. No issues, so.
Two things, I want to go back to the document for a second.
Sorry.
Sorry. I, I think we need to have, have that on the agenda, and not at this time, because I understand time constraints and so forth and how late it is. But I think it's important that we have this on the agenda, because it, it has become a health issue, and, and we need to thoroughly take a look at it at some point. And I'd like to see it come back up as a, as a topic. As far as the, the, your comment, John, regarding council, town council and school board, I would like to see us spend a little bit of time in some type of meeting with them to. would like to see us spend a little bit of time in some type of meeting with them to look at where we can have some type of consolidation of efforts. I understand there's some history with that and be it the outcome is the outcome, I still think we need to look at it from a taxpayer perspective to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to be able to say that we've done the due diligence, we've looked at certain activities that may or may not save money. At least we're doing those types of things and I think it has to start between the town council and school board to set directives for both the, for both the town side and the school side and the superintendent. Nate, I understand you and Mr. Karen are in a lot of discussions, a lot of collaboration together, but in order for us to move forward and understand how that's going to actually happen, I think the directive should come from both boards and, you know, move forward to see if there's opportunities that we can save taxpayers' monies and do the due diligence that we should be doing. I don't think that's happening right now at this particular point and I'm sure if you ask some of the town councilmen, they'll feel the same.
Any additional comments on the subject?
So, we would be looking at facilities, MIS, cable?
I would say anything that has an opportunity to be consolidated.
And Nate, do you have a direction from this board to implement consolidation where possible with the town of Londonderry? Have you been given that direction in the past?
Yes, yes.
Let me give you a few details on those items that I just listed off. If anybody has any more, feel free. Facilities. We looked at having our extremely, extremely successful facility staff work with the town of Londonderry and to help with maintaining their facilities. As a matter of fact, in the police station, our staff found a situation in a brand-new building where they had an HVAC unit that was open to the outdoors, exhausting air and just completely wasting it. We could have combined organizations with the town, but they were interested in transferring a person into the school district and we thought that we needed more of a working foreman, somebody that would take care of managing all of the processes and take care of the buildings. I think that if Nate were to work with Dave, they could start that up again and they could do that. As far as MIS, the two boards spent, I think, 18 months in meetings and I thought the outcome of that was that the MIS departments could be combined. Yet, the town council, on two occasions, they renewed the contract of their existing MIS contract company and then they transferred the contract to another company. That was a decision that was made on the town council, even after 18 months of study determined that we could help and we could take that over. Again, I think Nate, you would be very willing to take that on and to work with Dave and we could combine the MIS functions and possibly save the community money, but the councils decided otherwise on that. Cable. In the cable issue, we took, we took because it was our responsibility, because we directed both the town council and the school board, that we look at combining the cable department and that the school district could manage that. We put that man, Peter, and that man Nate, right there in those two chairs and frankly, it was nothing less than an inquisition and we might as well have placed them in Lyonsden and let the people flog them. People from around the state of New Hampshire filled this room and came up with all of the reasons why we wouldn't be good at taking that over. And the council voted to not take that over. I started, when I was the chairman, I held a joint meeting and we called it 10-2-5 or 10-5-2 and the idea was, it was 10 leaders, we would take two CEOs and we would come up with five ideas. Those three ideas are the three of the ideas we came up with. I think we had two other, I don't recall what they are right now. The school board has supported in the past and either three fifths or four fifths of this board, because some of us haven't been here that long, have given direction to Nate and I believe the town council has the ability to give direction to the town manager to work together and to make it happen. I frankly don't see them as board issues. I frankly don't see public floggings as anything that's useful in this community. I'm personally not willing to put these two gentlemen through something like that again.
My question, how long ago was that, Steve?
That flogging was 18 months, 12 to 18 months?
So, before I came on board, obviously. Yeah. Different people on the board, different economic times. I think there's lessons learned there and I think we have to move forward with that, but to simply say that we're not going to continue to go down that avenue?
I, no, I didn't say that at all. I said that I...
I don't think a public flogging is something that we're after and it's something that I wouldn't tolerate as well, or I don't think any of us would, but to not continue to look at opportunity and continue to present it. I mean, obviously, if we do the ROI on things and we see where the savings are, you know, we present it to the taxpayers, we do it publicly, you know, there's been, there has to be a pretty good reason why we wouldn't do something if it's going to save this town money at this point.
Again, I'll go back on the cable studio. This was by direction of the council for us to do it and they left the two people out there standing and being harassed. That was just unconscionable and that was 18 months ago. The MIS, we spent a lot of man-hours and the council decided against it. The other one was the facilities and that was just, we had to take their person and allow him to do it that way. I think if I was to, I'm with Steve here, but I think the two CEOs need to work together. If they can come up with something, then they can present it to the board. Putting the 10 of us together becomes a grandstand and that's not where I want to be. I think they're the ones at the working level that can come up with some plans if that's the case, present it to the boards at that time, a call, joint meeting to have it there, not have a grandstanding that we can do this, 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 and there's no results out of it. I'd rather have the people work behind the scenes, come up with the agreements or come up with a plan and now present it to the boards.
These three great, these three ideas are still great ideas.
Absolutely.
And I don't see any reason why they just can't happen.
Nancy, you have any?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I certainly wouldn't tolerate a public flogging either and that certainly demonstrates perhaps questionable judgment that evening. I wasn't there, I wasn't on the board. I agree with John. I think that, you know, new blood, new economic times, new folk, and I think that if there are indeed opportunities to save taxpayers' money, I think that we have to explore them. That's my perspective.
Anybody down at the firing?
The one thing I'd like to submit is I'm not sure the economic times were all that different. The Great Recession started somewhere toward late 2008 and that's roughly when I started as a board member and hmm, I wonder if there's a correlation there? Yeah, probably not. Anything else on the subject? Go ahead.
To follow, again, it's not the mechanics of how we do it, Steve and to Ron's point. It's really about making sure that we have, something being worked on, initiatives being worked on. If it's between Nate and Mr. Karen, then that's absolutely fine. If it's between the two boards, that's fine. It's more of, we need to be looking at these things and if it's going to turn into a grandstanding effort, as Ron pointed out, that's not what we want. What we want is action and some directives and some action. If we have that, that's fine.
Do we, as a board, feel that we've made that inadequate statement or accurate statement would be that our CEO is ready, willing, and able to work with the town side CEO on any initiatives that might arise in this area?
They do a really good job on the little ones, but take a look at a few of these big ones. We don't need to sit around and identify them, we already identified them. Make it happen.
Nate, do we need to give you any more resources or backing in order to deal with anything?
Underlying message?
Okay. One other thing, if that's all on the subject, one thing by way of public announcement I'd like to note is that at Glenn Douglas's prompting and Steve Young's suggestion, Nate and Sean have implemented a process whereby our school board agendas are now made available on the website through our RSS feed. That stands for what, Really Simple Syndication or something?
That's correct.
Anyway, you can subscribe to it by going to the school district website and the agenda and any supporting documents will be pushed to you, you will be notified of them. It's almost the same as getting it in your email, so anybody who is interested in being prompted when new information is available, please go to the school district website and subscribe to the RSS feed there.
And just a quick, it was Dan Cloud that set up the feed.
Dan, thank you, Dan. Anything else on questions, announcements, presentations, anything from the floor? Seeing none, can I have a motion on the consent agenda? I'm sorry. Oh, Glenn, come on up, I didn't see you.
Glenn Douglas, six over, look up. Thanks for doing the RSS feed, that works out pretty cool. As far as the cable situation with inquisitions, public floggings, and harassment, do you all extend that to all of the residents that showed up and spoke to keep it the way it was? Because those are awfully strong terms and I was kind of surprised when John Farrell brought up that you didn't want to discuss working together, but inquisition and floggings?
I'm accusing.
I just, I don't understand. So, that's all I have to say.
Do you want to ask for comments or responses? Comments, responses?
If you move on.
Move on, yes, okay.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Ron, second by Nancy.
I have something on this.
Thank you.
In the retirement section, it is, we have Martha Miller, a teacher at South School who's retiring. Martha Miller is a professional to the highest degree. She's a model teacher, inspiring colleagues, and faithful mentor to her teammates. She's the embodiment of the district's motto, giving wings to children's dreams. She has spent 33 years with the Londonderry School District, never waiving from the district's mission or school goals. Calling her a master teacher is an understatement. Her Excellency as a teacher gained her a 2006 New Hampshire Math and Science Teacher of the Year and the nomination in 2008 as a New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. Martha had contributed a great deal to the school and district. For the years, she facilitated two after-school clubs for all ages of students to expand their thinking and gain confidence with the chess club and the Young Entrepreneurs Club. Midway through her career, she brought something to the Londonderry School District. At that time, it was called Odyssey of the Minds, now Imagination Destination. Although she's be retiring, her influence on the children's lives will be sustained. As these children mature and face the challenges, they will continuously draw on life's lessons that she imparted with them. I've known Martha now for over 20 years as a school board member. She has been dedicated, she loves the children, her excitement in the classroom is tremendous. I wish her well on her retirement, but the district is surely going to miss her enthusiasm in the classroom and her desire to improve the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Before we call for a vote on the consent agenda, upcoming meetings are June 7th is a regular meeting here, 7:00 PM. Baccalaureate is June 9th at the Palace Theater, 6:30. Graduation is June 10th, 7:00 PM at the Verizon Center, all are welcome. Adult Ed graduation is June 13th at 6:30 at LHS and there is a regular meeting on June 21st at 7:00 PM here at the town offices. There's a motion by Ron and second by Nancy on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
John, I can't let it rest. On the issue of the cable studio, we'll go back on, there's some history on this one. The town council approached us about taking over the cable studio. We instructed Nate and Peter to see what he can do. Nate came up with the, what was happening there, his recommendation. He presented it at the town council and there was a group of people in the audience that were opposed to the idea, which is all well and good. As a board member, if I invite someone in on my proposal, my feeling is it's my job to protect them and make sure that they're treated with the respect. I may not agree with them, but I treat them with the respect. That wasn't done at that meeting and that's what we're talking about, the public flogging. Thank you.
And just so it's clear on the same issue.
I apologize.
Sean O'Keefe approached me during the election season and we had a conversation about this exact same issue and he was, wanted to know if the board would be interested in a consolidation of that unit of the cable studio. And I indicated to him that I expected the board would support something like that. I used the same terms that I did this evening with him in private because that, in my opinion, is what occurred, but I indicated to him that I believe that the two, the town manager and the superintendent could work together to make this happen and that was my one-fifth that it could happen, but it wouldn't, on my watch, happen the way it did the last time. Thank you.
All right. Let's see, committee reports. Becky, one last time.
Inductions for the 2011-2012 class reps and student council executive boards took place on Monday, May 16. The highlight of the evening was a dance the senior class officers performed as a thank you to their advisors. Last Friday on May 20th, the student council attended the New Hampshire Association of Student Council's Spring Convention. During the meeting, Londonderry State Secretary-elect Hannah Willis was inducted as State Secretary. Also, freshman Jack McGrath was nominated for State Secretary-elect. Jack ran against two opponents and was elected. He will be shadowing Hannah Willis this year before becoming State Secretary next year. The LHS marching band will be participating in the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 30th. The following night, the annual music banquet will take place during which the drum major and color guard captains will be announced. On May 13th, the final pep rally of the year was held. During the event, Coach McDougall was honored for his contributions to the softball team as he completes his last year's coach. The Teacher of the Year award was also announced during the pep rally. The 2011 Teacher of the Year is English teacher Amity Ferraro. The English Tour and Awards took place this afternoon in the LHS cafeteria. The Move Alpha Theta Math Honor Society inductions will take place after school on Thursday. The underclassmen academic award ceremony will take place on June 9th at 8:10 AM and the senior award ceremony will begin at 10:30 AM. The senior prom takes place this Saturday night at the Atkinson Country Club and the theme is Midnight on the Mediterranean. And Kaffa Cody finished her report for today.
The student council executive board for the 2011-2012 school year is President Lauren Boulay, Vice President Daniel Guerin, Secretary Amanda Bentley, Membership Coordinator Tony Gonder, Publicist Adrian Baker, Safe Coordinator Kristen Pelangi, School Board Representative Kaffa Cody, NHASC State Secretary Hannah Willis, and NHASC State Secretary-elect Jack McGrath.
Thank you, welcome, Kaffa. We're looking forward to working with you in the coming year. And Becky, one more time, thank you, we appreciate all you've done. Stella?
Tomorrow night at Moose Hill, the staff will host an open house from 6:30 to 8:00 for incoming kindergarten students and their families. It's a great opportunity to tour the facilities and meet the staff. At North School, the fifth graders have completed their newscasts and they will soon be broadcast over Leo 21. At Matthew Thornton, Cheryl Jacobs, Cheryl O'Shea, and Mike Korf would like to thank the board, the staff, and student volunteers for... the board, the staff and student volunteers for their support for a very successful Olympics, a special Olympics event. The staff volunteers numbered over seventy-five and they had over a hundred high school volunteers, including the South Heagan girls softball team. And they're looking forward to hosting this event or doing this event next year. Also at Matthew Thornton, Matthew Thornton's participating in Walk New Hampshire. It's a statewide event to promote, promote healthy lifestyles. Participants will walk one mile around school grounds on June third and the rain date is June tenth. The way the weather's been, no, no. And then the New England Math League scores are in and the top score in fifth grade was Travis Janelle, the runner-up was Patrick Zepf. In fourth grade, top score was Chris Cudo and Elizabeth Iaconis and the runner-up was Nick Cudo. And then, I'm not sure, I, I didn't see Stephen Carper's minutes for his report. And I just wanted to mention that Patricia Lawson brought the BioConnect Club to Matthew Thornton on April twenty-first for a science day. And they started out with a little skit and then the kids came back to the classrooms and they went through little labs to kind of decide who, who did what. She did a great job, the high school kids were wonderful and the fifth graders absolutely loved that afternoon. And I just wanted the board to know just how much the kids liked it because I, the high school kids had to do that after school and they were just wonderful with it. So it was really, really nice to see. And then at the middle school, the monsoon team is hosting their annual monsoon senior social on Friday, June third, from one forty-five to two forty-five. They're looking forward to seeing all their graduates and hearing what their graduates, graduates will be doing. Also, the eighth graders are spending a wet but wonderful time on the annual science floating lab. This activity is not only a key application of the oceanography unit in science, but it is integrated with the math curriculum and data collection and analysis and graphing, as well as the fun integration with literature and the intrigue surrounding the Isle of Shoals. The literacy team is sponsoring a guest speaker for tomorrow's early release day at the middle school. He will be addressing executive functioning, differentiation and literacy in the content area through a presentation of the use of visual tools for learning. And then on Saturday, May twenty-first, the Cooperative Middle School in Stratton was the site of Expanding Your Horizons in Science and Math Conference for young ladies in grade six through eight. Last year, the conference attracted a hundred eighty young ladies. The purpose of this conference is to encourage girls to persist in studying math and science and expanding their future career options. Some of the goals of the conference were provide young ladies with opportunities to meet and interact with positive women role models who are active in math and science, increase the interest of young girls in math and science by providing exciting and fun hands-on learning experience, and to encourage young ladies to study as much math and science as possible by showing them the benefits of education and its relevance to their lives. And at the high school, the advanced woodworking students have entered the New England Student Woodworking Design Competition, which is held at Marlboro High School in Marlboro, Mass, place where I graduated from. Schools from all over New England send woodworking students to this competition. Yesterday, Tom Chicorello brought five projects down by students. They will be there all week. The students, Brent St., Brent St. Willis had an oak dresser, Robert Bison futon sofa bed, Justin Resnick a chessboard, Michael Goddard an oak coffee table, and Nathan Greenwood had a replica bow from Lord of the Rings. And then Mr. Soboloff sent the following sports highlights. LHS won the Beeman Trophy for Spring Sports, six-three. The boys tennis finished their regular season fourteen to zero. Girls tennis team finished their regular season twelve to two, third seed going into the tournament. Girls lacrosse is undefeated in New Hampshire, their only loss was at Andover, Mass. Softball is currently twelve to two, they're in third place in Division One. Boys lacrosse is currently eight to five, they're hoping for, to host the first round of the playoffs. The baseball and softball teams will all qualify for the Troy County League Tournament. And we are hosting the Troy County League Track Meet on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, yeah. Great, thanks very much. Nancy?
On May the twelfth, I attended the Matthew Thornton PTA meeting. And I can report that over the course of the last several years, through the Box Top fundraising effort, the PTA has raised enough money to replace a sofa, which was evidently in a state of disrepair at the Matthew Thornton Library. And they are also going to replace the popcorn popping machine that is used to pop popcorn for the popcorn sales. So the expenditure for the sofa will be approximately twenty-two hundred dollars and the expenditure for the popcorn machine is approximately a thousand dollars. I can also report that the science backpack program, I believe it's for fifth graders, although I'm not positive about that, could be fourth and fifth. I'm sorry, Mrs. Mack isn't here because I'm sure she could clear me up, is up and running again with opportunities for families to sign up online for the backpacks. And the program is running on a pilot basis until the end of the year. And each student takes the backpack home, works on a specific science project, and then returns the backpack for redistribution to another student. They are expecting that if all goes well, this program will be offered again in the fall and Matthew Thornton will, will work to promote students taking the backpacks home as a way of, of study. In their continued effort to support the district, they are working on their next fundraiser, although they haven't quite exactly determined what that will be. But when they do, I'll be happy to report to the board.
Thank you.
Quickly, on the planning board side of the fence, it was a meeting with Woodmont Altrids. Discussion around, still discussion is around the overall big planning picture, but, but numbers are being thrown around and we've heard no more than six hundred students at this particular point coming out of Woodmont. And I, I'm certain that number's going to fluctuate up or down. But that's basically what, what impact we're being told is going to be to the, the, the school district at this particular point by, by that particular project.
Any sense of timeframe?
On the project itself?
When, when six hundred students might arrive?
It's going to be a while. I mean, we're, we're, we're... Yeah, it's, it's years out, but, but the, the reality of the situation is we're still playing with, with, with a bunch of, you know, pines, sky numbers at this particular point, but six hundred seems to be the one throwing around. Great, thank you.
Steve and I attended a special education meeting today and a very interesting discussion that we had today. And a couple of weeks ago, we spoke about the math program and how we are going back to the basics, not being as, going down in depth and not as wide in breadth. And we've talked about, about the same type of program in the special ed area that we're, you know, we've seen our scores a little bit lower than we expected to do it. And they, we spoke about how the math program is going to go almost like the three-tier model, something similar to that with extra help for those students that aren't making it, to make sure we have the basics down as we go along there. There'll be much more to follow with this discussion at the board meeting. There'll be some presentations coming up before the end of the year or over the summer on this. But I think it's a good, good start to where we need to get to go in the math program and the special education program. And the amount of, the other thing that was very interesting, and we'll be seeing it again in the presentation, is the computer programs that they've now combined. So now a teacher can truly look at a student, all the grades, and see that over time. So I think we're making a lot of progress in our data collection, our data usage, and bringing it down to the level of the teacher is able to use it now in a very, very constructive way to help the students. So I see that coming up next year.
When I was in that meeting with Ron, it was good because we got here before the rain started.
Yes.
And the rest of you had to come in the rain.
Yeah, we did.
I just, John, I wouldn't mind if you, I just want to say one thing on that, the Woodmont number of students issues before we have anybody out, running out to build a school on us or, or recording that there's six hundred students coming to town. I, I think the, the quote or the number six hundred came from somebody that I, I don't think may have had all of the information. I think we need to rely on our experts in the Economic Development Department to come up with the numbers. What, what we do know they've said is they've said that it'll be thirteen hundred units over the next twenty years. What we don't know is the mix of those units. And the mix of those units is very critical to the number of students that would come. I never believed these numbers. It took me four or five years to accept them. But the reality is, a regular home in Londonderry brings one point two students to the community. And a apartment or condominium-style home brings point two children to the community. I think it's important to know what the mix is at, at the Woodmont project before we can estimate the number of students that, you know, that will come.
I think that the, the numbers, again, they're, they're grossly thrown out there and we're still playing around with all kinds of numbers at this point, but that's the one as of late has been thrown out there.
Yeah, and it just sometimes, and it ends up in the paper and it's six hundred students and that's an elementary school and now we're building a new school.
No, no, this is, this is over a long period of time, over different age groups.
And, and I think that their concept is, you know, live-work units and, you know, units where you have living space over, where you probably wouldn't have children in it. The development in exit five, the apartments there, actually gives us a ratio of less than point one. We didn't even get to the point two up there, so it's, you know, it's, it's dependent. Again, I never believed those numbers. It took me years for Andre to convince me and poring through the work and, and, you know, Peter knows this because he sees the numbers of the homes that we have. Just hope for development so we can get some revenue going.
All right, deliberations. First, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Greg, we don't, Ed?
I'm sorry. No, not a problem. I was about to say first Nate, I think, is right.
Good evening. I'm here this evening to ask the board's permission to submit the grant application for adult education programming. I believe you have a copy of that. You received a copy of that in your packet. Hopefully you had a chance to review it. I just would like to go over a few highlights to consider. One being that the Londonderry Adult Education Program is one of the key components to keeping our dropout rate below one percent. This year, it was actually point seven percent, which is a success rate of ninety-nine point three percent. Our adult education program has grown to be the fifth largest in the state out of twenty-six programs in student enrollment. We have expanded and will continue to expand offerings, particularly in our elective courses, which is very helpful in ensuring that our students graduate with, with not only the core courses, but with a, a full variety of educational opportunities. And this will all be made possible by utilizing the funds that have been proposed to be given to our program. We see more students with specific needs coming to the adult education program. And with this grant money, we would be able to provide the specialized instruction and support to continue the success we've had. This includes having a certified transition slash guidance counselor onboard, which is something that a lot of the programs in the, that we discussed at our last meeting at the state level are adding to their programming. They help with secondary planning, providing support to students while they're getting ready to transition from high school, our high school program, adult ed program, onto other offerings that, such as college, the workplace, and some that are just facing some issues while they're going to school that they just need to talk about. Also, I've, in my proposal, in accordance with NIOSC recommendations that Mr. Parent and the committee discussed earlier, one of them was, I've put in is the addition of a computer lab to increase the use of technology both during the day and the evening, educational opportunities that we have in our school. And this would provide a, a place for our students to access all the technology and education that's out there. In conclusion, I would just ask that your support, for your support in allowing the submission of this grant application to the Bureau of Adult Education. And are there any questions?
Any questions?
Chairman, I make a motion that we permit the application for the grants in the sum of seventy-four thousand dollars in the adult education program.
Second. Okay, motion is by Ron, second is by John. All those in favor, please... Oh, I'm sorry.
I just missed one thing.
Sure.
When I reviewed this. You talked about a person. You talked about a person?
Oh, the guidance...
The guidance?
Transition individual, yes. We plan to add that to the program for, it's four hours a week and the person would schedule that time and to meet with the students that are going to be graduating each year and to help with plan for their transition onto, you know, further opportunities.
Didn't jump out at me because it's thirty-six hundred dollars?
Okay. That's for the entire year?
That's my point.
Oh.
You, you talked about, and it, and it sounded like a prudent thing, particularly with the students, that a guidance, you know, somebody to help them along and, but at thirty-six hundred dollars is...
Yeah, it's a worthy investment. I think it's going to be extremely helpful in...
We're not hiring a ninety thousand dollar person.
Oh, no, no, no. This is just an hourly person to come in that has, that is licensed as a guidance counselor and has a master's degree. I'm sorry, correct, you're, you're absolutely right. It, it is, for the, the payback we'll get from the small investment of the grant money will pay ultimate dividends to...
Thank you.
To our program.
One more question.
See?
Is, is the benefit number correct?
Yes, that's for, I should clarify that, that's for the entire, to cover the benefits and the, and the FICA for the entire adult education staff. That Nate worked, worked that in there and we're going to use that money to cover that cost. We actually, and since you brought up, our program, I'm proud to say, does not, through tuition and everything else, we don't, it just, it's not a losing endeavor at all, obviously.
It's revenue neutral.
Exactly, thank you.
Fantastic.
Well said.
Oh, let me, let me add one thing there, too. The thirty-four hundred dollar person that, that Steve mentioned...
Yes.
Is somebody who's going to be paid out of somebody else's money.
Out of the state's grant money, which is a nice thing.
And you found a way to pay FICA and benefits for other people through that money, too?
For people who are related, directly related to this program, the benefits will be picked up as identified in the grant, yes, so...
Not bad.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, again, motion was by Ron, second was by John. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's five, nothing, thank you.
Thank you, and I just wanted to invite you all as I, I gave you invitations to, and anyone else, please join us for the adult education graduation on Monday, June thirteenth at six-thirty at the cafeteria. Thank you.
Greg, for the board's edification, about how many graduates do you expect for adult ed this time around?
Around, we have twenty-four right now. There are about two on the cusp, but I'm pushing them as hard as I can to make sure they get everything completed, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
What was it last cycle, Greg?
Excuse me?
What was it last cycle, thirty-something?
Yes, we had thirty-six last time. Thank you.
Nate?
Oh, I'm sorry. Nancy and Peter?
Nancy has some good ones, I like.
Nancy? You're up, Nancy and Peter. All right. We'll take those.
All those in favor?
Oh, that's his job.
It's amazing. In the packet was a memo highlighting the recommendations for food increase and the two spreadsheets, one at twenty-five cent increase and one at a twenty cent increase. As I mentioned in my memo, we made two adjustments to the, to the spreadsheet. One was we did reduce our projection of, of income, total income for the program, down by ten thousand dollars. As I mentioned, the April financials didn't come in as, as expected. So we made that adjustment and that, and that came in after, I, I don't move this, so. Came in after the, the previous board meeting. So we thought it was prudent that we made that adjustment as soon as we received the information. I don't do this at ten o'clock at night. I know you do. And the other one was a more up-to-date number on the refrigerator freezer unit checked to be purchased in FY thirteen. Again, came in after the board meeting and soon as... Again, came in after the board meeting and soon as we had the information, we thought it was relevant to put it in even though we're only discussing really FY twelve. The recommendation as we, as we presented two weeks ago is for a twenty-five cent increase for the upcoming year. We show you the next five years, more or less to show you a financial picture so that if things go well, we're looking at this increase or that increase along the way, but the request or the approval is strictly the one-year FY twelve price increase or lunch pricing beginning this coming September. As the first reading has been approved for the food meal pricing policy, it'll be more formal that we present the financials and then ask the board on an annual basis, usually in May or April, for a price increase based on the financials of the program as we see it.
Questions? Okay, is there, is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion for the twenty cent increase.
Second. Okay, motion by Ron, second by John. This is for the twenty cent increase as opposed to the twenty-five that was proposed by Peter. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I gotta commend, I'm the one that's pushed back all the years about the rate increases in the lunches and I think Nancy and Peter have done an excellent job maintaining the lunches at a very, very low rate. Based on the numbers I see here, I believe that the rate is justified now. I don't think there's a way to do it without going into the general budget to support the food program and that has not been the policy of this district for years and years. So I commend you for all the work, hard work you've done to maintain it at the low rate for the last five and six years and putting up with my badgering over the prices, but I think it's time, it's been seven?
Been seven.
Good. But, but I thank you very much and I support the twenty cent increase this year.
Additional discussion? Nancy, Steve in. All right, motion on the floor is for the twenty cent increase. This would be an increase in price for school lunches starting next year, next school year. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's five, nothing for the twenty cent increase. Thanks very much and thank you for the cookie. Next up is policies for a second reading.
Do you want to take them all together or do you want to do them separately?
If there have been no changes on any of them, let's take them all together.
So, just so for the record, we, the board had asked, we changed, on the fund balance policy, we changed three point five to three, which we did, so that's inconsistent with the request of the board. The other issue is signs on the bus idling policy. I mean, the policy itself, I believe, is intact. It's a question of what does the board want to do with signs?
How about we get one big sign that says no and then next to it we can put idling, dog food.
You know, I don't want to say it, but, but, but in joke, we, let me tell you where I think I stand on, on the issue of the signs and the board obviously has the, the right to make the decision. As I look at it and talking to the colleagues, the issue on signs, as I mentioned before, is enforcement. If there are no signs on the premises, there's very little enforcement can take place. Enforcement meaning sir or ma'am, please do whatever you do, we have a policy, the sign's right there. So the question comes down to if the board is looking to pass the policy to meet state regulations, they'll need signs. If it's looking to, if it's looking to fulfill the intent of what the state is trying to achieve in order to enforce no idling in the particular areas that we have designated, and I believe in the packet Chuck and I had labeled where we would put about sixteen signs, we have to put some kind of a sign that's visible to reference when we ask people to turn off there, or move, turn off the engine or move.
Do we have to put up a sign that says no murder?
I don't remember, sixteen, I'm a sign, somebody knows. I make signs, that's how I make money. So, I mean, I don't make them for the school because I don't believe I should be doing work for the school, but I, I don't know, I'm okay with the policy, I'm just not okay with the signs, particularly sixteen signs. And, you know, I, 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 I sit in the parking lot and people go the wrong way on the, on the one-way signs at the high school and the assistant principals, the parents, the students are pretty good, and the assistant principals go over and holler at them and say, you can't do that. And then they argue and say, I'll do whatever I please. Well, there's already a sign that says, don't enter here. The sign didn't help.
I just, I think that to Peter's point, and I agree, that if you don't have a sign, then you can't enforce anything. You know, those people that are going the wrong way, we can make a phone call and we can have them cited and they can pay a fine. You know, similarly with this, we can do the same thing because it's enforceable at this point. And for the price of the signs, I think we're looking at, you know, somewhere around seven hundred and twenty dollars, seven hundred and thirty dollars. If you can enforce it and someone is doing it and we want to take those actions because you have someone that's consistent with not following the policy, that's what we've got to do. Otherwise, you're never going to be able to enforce this thing. And it's unfortunate, I hear you about the signs, but I just think it's unfortunate that we, we do have to do, use the signs in order to enforce it.
I appreciate your point of view.
Nancy?
I concur with, with John. I think that it's going to be impossible for us to have any clot with this unless there's some kind of signage. You know, I go to the bank, I park at the bank, you know, in the little drive-up thing and I forget to turn my vehicle off until what? I see the sign, I see the sign that says, please turn off your vehicle while you're, you know, conducting your transaction, so I turn my vehicle off, so I, I agree that we have to have some signage.
I return to my question. What level of things do we have to put up signs for and what level of things can we assume that people understand? Do we have to put up signs that say, no cheating on exams? Do we have to put up signs that say, no truancy? Is, at, at some point, there is a presumption that people know you can't do something. And by the same standard, if we suddenly put up signs that say, no dogs, is that going to work or are we, are we expecting that people are going to barrel through them like they barrel through the do not enter signs? I guess my concern there is we could put up signs that say, no everything, but what it seems to come back to, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that these laws, at least the ones about, well, I guess it came back to dog fouling, are established in state, in state RSAs. The authority exists to have them enforced. We don't need to put up signs to, to make it illegal.
I think, from our perspective, what it facilitates is the normal, everyday person, if you say, you go out, turn off your car. Unfortunately, we don't always deal with normal, everyday people or people that are, are not going to be argumentative. So it assists the, whether it's the teacher or the aide or the assistant principal, the principal goes out and says, look, you, I appreciate it if you turn your car, your car off because you're in a no idling zone or whatever. And sometimes we get back the response, oh yeah? Where's the sign? Okay? So now it makes life a little bit easier for the assistant principal or the principal or the teacher say, right there, it says, no idling, please turn off your car. So it's, can we enforce it without signs? Sure. But what it's simply doing with the signs is making life a little bit easier for people for, and actually for us, to be very honest, so that it cuts down on the argumentative nature that we get sometimes. There's no doubt about it. You're absolutely right. You can have a sign up there that says, no idling, somebody's going to go there and they're going to idle their car, just like with no left turn or no right turn or.
No smoking within twenty feet.
Right, no smoking within twenty feet. Absolutely. Those are all issues.
Parking only for town hall business?
Right, there you go. So, but it's, it simply makes life a little bit easier for the people that have to enforce it. And, and, you know, if you get, and our intent would be, look, you go out there, you say, you know, please turn off your engine or what have you, most people are going to comply. But in, to Nancy's point, too, oftentimes, you know, you're just going along and daily and you're sitting there and it's December and it's chilly out and you got there a little bit early and you're waiting for the kids and you're listening to the radio and, you know, it's nice and comfortable in the car, you know, but if you see the no idling signs, say, well, okay, you know, turn it off. So it just helps with the process. That's really what it comes down to, more than anything else, just like, and I, and I don't mean to bring this up because, but having a sign, pick up after your dog, I mean, it's a reminder to people. You know, there's a sign, there's, here's a legitimate expectation because there are a lot of people who have no connection to the schools and live in neighborhood and they go there, so you're not going to think about it. But if there's a sign that says, you know, bring your pooper scooper or whatever it happens to be, to clean up after your dog, it's a reminder. You know what I mean? And so, I mean, my position on the signs is, you know, that sign, signs, signs, everywhere sign, but to have.
Blocking out the scenery, breaking my mind.
That's right. But to have some signs up to remind people and also, you know, to put, and again, I'll go back to it, to give our people just a little bit more common going out and say, hey, you know, you got to turn it off. And so we all, where's the sign, which is a response we get and you say, uh, right there, thank you very much. That's all, you know, it makes life, and for, it's really, in a sense, a small investment, just, it saves aggravation and grief and it's a reminder.
Ron.
The other question I have is we're reviewing a policy on school bus idling. Now we're in the policy today to talk about cars.
No, I think it, I think one of the paragraphs that mentions that the delivery trucks and another.
Service and delivery vehicles.
Yes.
Why can't we put up a sign that says, no deliveries accepted from idling vehicles? They'd learn pretty quick.
But again, we're putting this up for the cars and our policy doesn't address that. I'm just, I'm just asking the question, it seems to be, should it be in the policy? I guess is the question I'm asking. Because they're very specific about diesels.
Yeah, they're very specific about diesels, right.
Because that's what the state has.
So, so, so the next question, if that's the case, are we going overboard? I, I don't know, I'm just asking, I'm just.
I think if a, if a school bus driver says, where's the sign, the answer is, you're fired.
I agree with you on that. Yes, I agree with you on that.
And if the sign vendor's delivering signs with this diesel truck, you're going to say, you can't, you know, you're not going to be our vendor.
Peter, I think you had your hand up.
I just, I don't believe the point, I just want to make the point that on several occasions, the, the law enforcement people of Londonderry have told Chuck and I over and over that they can't enforce a traffic issue without a sign. So I've been at many large events at the high school, whether it's mostly athletics, and we'll have issues of where cars are parked, we'll bring the officer and he'll say, I can't do anything because you don't have a sign here that says, no parking. I can't do anything unless there's a sign that says, no parking here or whatever. That's why, from Chuck and I's point, is the importance of the sign and it kind of gets back to what Superintendent Greenberg was saying, only from what I'm hearing, over and over again, when we talk to officers and when we walk to facilities and talk about no parking areas and so forth and so on, the issue of the officer comes back over and over again is if there's not a, a sign that is, that's, that's visible, that we can't, we can't enforce it. You can call us, but we can't do anything.
Uh, go ahead.
I guess my, my point is, if they don't talk about cars in state law, I don't want to be innovative and go another step. That's my point of view. If you want to talk about what's in, in the policy and idle buses and all that, I'm all set with that.
That's fine.
But I don't want to go to cars and enforcing something that's not a state law here.
Okay.
Chuck?
Well, that was my next question. It clearly states that it's only talking about buses and deliveries and doesn't talk about cars and do we want to, you know, add to this or do we want to accept it as it is and not have to worry about non-commercial vehicles, what really reads?
Nancy?
Well, I guess my question is, do we have any sense, you know, this is probably, I mean, I don't know how we would go about getting this information, but yeah, really. Do we have any sense at all of how many of those of us that are parents have left our vehicles idling? I mean, I've been guilty of it from time to time. I mean, where is the biggest problem, Nate, I guess is my question.
I don't know. I know idling cars are the devil's work, but.
You can tell it's late.
Let me, let me answer the question. I think the one area that Chuck and I kind of identified as a issue of concern would be, I used the phrase, the horseshoe at Matthew Thornton, where if you come down the high school, you take a left and you go into Matthew Thornton, there's the turnaround for the parents. That was probably the only area of where parents are.
High school, by the gym.
Not, but not too many at all, not, they're not, they're not there too much because they're only there for five minutes or so. It's, and I, to me, the only one I can identify, and Chuck and I, as well as have walked around, was that there was the horseshoe at Matthew Thornton was the one area that we thought of a concern where it's, it's hundred percent parents who are waiting, dropping off and waiting for kids.
Okay.
That was the only, I think, hundred percent parent issue that we, that we saw.
Let me interrupt here and ask, is there a consensus on the board as to whether we want to extend this policy to cars?
No.
Okay, then I guess we don't have to talk about the horseshoe and things like that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let's, let's pull out the policy EEACD and deal with that separately. Do we have a consensus on the board as to whether we want to add signs to it?
I don't think you have to.
That's only people that work first or.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so if, if that, if the board, I can make a suggestion, if in fact, the board's not going to extend it to personal vehicles and it's vehicles that belong to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm all right with that.
Then, I don't think there's a necessity for a sign. The only exception I might make would be depending on where the delivery area is. So what I would suggest is for the board, recommendation of the board, is where we have deliver.
In the building.
Delivery areas for the building, that we have signs up there that say, no idling vehicles. So you can have a variety of drivers coming to make deliveries at all times and it's not going to, it's not like we were able to get to driver X for a paper company or whatever and it's good to have that sign that says, no idling vehicle.
And it's near the building.
Yes.
All right, I'm good with that one.
Everybody happy with that, Peter?
I need, I would request you consider the high school gym where it's not just our buses, you've got athletic buses coming in from other towns, constantly coming back there. That would be, other than what the superintendent said, I'd ask you to consider that one area. That, that's the main area where, where buses from outside come in and would, and would park and wait.
Consensus regarding that? All right, discussion regarding that.
What? Would you do it at the entrance to that parking lot?
No, you would do it.
Because they kind of park all over the lot.
Right, but it'd be two areas.
In the back.
Just the gym, not, not the main building. The front where, and then in the back.
Yeah, they park back there.
The back is where they, they go to pick up the students.
Yeah.
I'd even have one sign in the front where, and just, because that's where, that's where the visiting teams will, will pick up the kids.
Okay, but where the, I'm sorry.
Okay, but where the, um, I'm sorry, but where the handicapped spots are, they have to drive by that spot to get to the back of the building or the front of the building.
I would put it there so they, they drive by it so they see the sign no matter where they are.
Sounds reasonable.
It, it, it sounds reasonable, but the only question I have is, they're a bus, they follow the same laws. Their company probably tells them the exact same thing. Like, I would not expect that our buses would need a sign if they go over to Pinkerton or something like that. I, it's just part of the law. You guys can do what you want with the sign on that one, as far as I'm concerned, but I don't think it's necessary because they're, they should have the same instruction from their company.
Yeah, Ryan, you have a very good point. The, the only thing that I think, in that case, I think the thing the sign would help would be people then would know what area they're not supposed to be idling in. You know what I mean?
No, I, you know, it's getting too late on it, so I just...
Okay, okay.
It's a state law, so they're all stuck with it.
Any other, any additional discussion on this policy? All right, then let's, let's... Mary, is there a motion?
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, let me ask this. Can we, can we now do a motion on all the policies for second reading?
I'm good with it. Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion on policy DAV, ECA, CD, and EFBB. That's the fund balance policy, school bus idling policy, and food service meal pricing.
Second. Motion by Ron, second by John. Any discussion?
Clarification.
Go ahead.
So the signs are not in the policy.
That is correct.
And cars are not in the policy.
Right.
If you guys end up needing a sign by the gentleman, it's not a po-, a board policy.
Steve, hold on. It says no idling zone. Signs will be placed in visible locations. Just say that policy.
Well, based on the direction that we have from the board, we have a, we've been directed by, we know where we have to put the signs up.
Okay, which would be at loading areas.
Right.
Right, okay.
Just to, to your point that it is in the policy.
Well, this is the second reading, so why don't you guys just strike that for the third reading?
Okay.
Does that work?
Will you, will you strike that or just the, the areas will be where the, where the deliveries are?
Near the building. I mean, I remember this happened in Derry, at the Derry, um, school, at the church. Um, they have vehicles that, that got into the air intake system. So, I mean, that all makes sense. If the sign's on the building, because you don't want the truck against the building running.
Okay.
So, yeah, go ahead and, all right, thanks.
All right. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's five, nothing. Mary, thank you. Um, one thing that I'd like to ask, and this is just me individually, is if at all possible, if we're going to put up a sign for buses, um, in front of the gym or something, can we try to word it in a friendly way? Buses, please don't idle, something like that?
Yeah.
Just to maintain a certain sense of welcome. All right, um, policies for third reading or adoption?
Mr. Chairman, I make a policy on policy JGA, JGAA, JGAA dash R, JGAA dash E.
Second. Motion by Ron, second by John. Any discussion? Did you want to add anything?
No, she had nothing to say.
All right. Um, all, all in favor of these four policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Anybody else notice that the two things that we spent the most time talking about tonight basically go to people needing to be responsible for their actions and basically living up to laws and requirements and not needing a sign to tell you what's right and what's wrong and just doing it? Kind of discouraging.
Seeing that, under state law, RSA ninety-one A, hole in three, section two A through F, we'll be going into non-public session.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Ron. Aye, John Robinson.
Aye, John LaBerge.
We've been doing painting in there, so southern walls, walls may still be...
And if you're in this room, you're on the air.